Call the meeting to order. Get here and follow me, thanks for the stay in the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we have our discussion. This is a special call meeting of the Newnan City Council, July the 25th, 2019. We do have one item on the agenda, but I'm gonna add another so that I can introduce Christopher Slay, who is a Boy Scout with Troop 55, Christopher. There he is. Welcome. We appreciate you being here today. He is, uh, the Troop 55 is out of Faith Creek Methodist Church, and he is here tonight aptly to earn his communication badge. So, welcome. Thank you for being here. The one item... The one item of business this evening that we have is unfinished business, and of course, all of you know it's a continuation of a public hearing from July the 16th, 2019, the request from residential group to rezone 6.667 acres located on East Broad Street, known as Caldwell-Tanks property, from CBD, Central Business District, to mixed use, mixed use development district. Tonight, we'll have a presentation by staff, a solicitation of input and feedback from the community, an opportunity for response by the applicant if he so desires this evening, and questions and comments from council. We took our ties off. Mr. Phillips has his tie off. The intent was here to be a bit more informal than last time, although this is a public hearing, and we will adhere to certain protocols, especially etiquette, and common courtesy and respect toward one another, just as we did last time. We want to be a bit more informal than we were last time. Something I failed to do last time that I will do now, you can see those doors are open, but if anything were to happen in this room, there is also an exit down this hallway right here that goes out into our courtyard in case someone needs that exit. So, it's there. Don't go that way, you can't get out. Anyway, tonight, I want to welcome everyone again. Thank you again for your participation, and it's very important conversation, I'll call it, that we're having in our community about the redevelopment of a very important five acres of land that is so close to downtown Newnan and contiguous with our historic districts. Tonight is the first of those three meetings where we're gonna hear from the citizens, from city staff, from the council, and possibly the developer this evening, who has proposed a project for the Caldwell-Tanks site in downtown Newnan. At the last council meeting, for those of you who were here, and I think that's probably the majority of you, we heard from citizens who were opposed to the project, we heard from the applicant, and we also heard from those citizens who were in favor of the project. But for those who were opposed to the project, let me just go over several of the reasons that they were in opposition, and as we move forward tonight, we're gonna stipulate that we've heard those reasons. And so, as we hear from the community, and after we hear from Mr. Phillips, what we desire to hear from the community is what the community wants to see on the site. So, this is a lot less... Is there something over there that's playing? Okay. Pardon?
You need to be closer to the microphone to speak up.
I can do both.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Okay, so, tonight, some of the things that we heard last week, just go down the list of a few of them. This is not inclusive, but some of the things we heard last week was any development of the one acre lot on the east side of the railroad track, the density of the apartments, the lack of architectural compatibility between the proposal and the historic district in downtown Newnan, the lack of adherence to the comp plan and the LCI, the lack of parking, and the increase of traffic, and the ratio of the commercial retail space to residential. And there are others. I'm not gonna sit here and try to carry, try to rehash every one of them, but those are the ones that we heard, and like I said, there are others, but what, again, tonight, what we're gonna do is try to shift gears and move into what you wanna see rather than what we already understand are shortcomings. So, Mr. Phillips, I'll call on you to give a staff report and the presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, can you hear me? We need to turn this volume up a little more. Brian, I think, is watching from the video room, so he should be able to turn it up some. Is that better? During testing, it was pretty loud. I'll try to speak up anyway so that you can hear me. Mayor, Counsel, I want to do something a little bit different tonight. I want to apologize, I'm gonna turn my back to you, and I want to speak to our citizens, if you don't mind, please.
Please.
It's their meeting, okay? So, good evening, glad to see you, good turnout again. As the mayor said, very critical... There we go. I think he just got me, got me turned up, so I don't have to yell now. Very good. Thank you, Brian, wherever you're at. Very critical site, decision here for the city that could impact us for several years. So, I want to go ahead and just say thank you for your interest and your involvement, and looking forward to our discussion later tonight. But I am gonna start out with a little bit of a presentation, a little city demographic information, a little bit about our comprehensive planning process, our LCI, and then we're gonna turn it over, and we're going to have some input from everyone here tonight. And we'll explain that... Handle it. Like the mayor said, we're gonna be a little less formal, but we're gonna try to get an opportunity for everybody to provide some input on this opportunity. So, I'm gonna get started. Newnan under glance, I think all of us know the growth that we've experienced here in the last 20 or so years, but I think a lot of it is attributed to the fact that we live here, we've chosen to raise our family here, quality of life. It is a great place to live, great place to raise a family. Population, just under 40,000. Expected to increase by about 1,200 a year. Again, that just simply goes back to the fact that a lot of people enjoy living here, and it's gonna continue. It's a very, very, very desirable place. You can see those population estimates, 4% a year. It's pretty large. Medium income, about 53,000. Medium age, just under 35 years of age. A little over 20% below the poverty level. But you ask, what's that in reference to? I want to show you this. These are our 2000 stats, and you can see how we have changed demographically since 2000. You see the population growth, you're aware of that, from 16,000 almost 40. Medium income growth from 36 to 53. Medium age, we have gotten a little bit older, from 31 to 34, six. Poverty level has actually ticked up just a fraction, from 197 to 20.5. Let's talk a little bit about housing, and that's kinda what a lot of you are here for tonight, is that the housing component of this proposal. Just over 15,000 total households in Newnan. Average household size, 2.5, holding steady. It is dropping off a little faster in some parts of the country, but we're pretty steady here in Newnan. 39% of those households have children under the age of 18. Again, great place to raise a family. Lot of conversation the last couple of months about these next two numbers. Owner occupied units, we set at 54%, while the renter occupied units is at 46%. That 46% is something that I want to explain a little bit. It's broke down into two different numbers there. 28% of those 46 live in an apartment complex, and of that 28, 22 live in complexes with five or more units, while you can see 6% live in apartment complexes with four or less units. And 18% of that 46% actually rent single-family homes. So, that's a, that's a good breakdown of where that 46% comes from. Same thing as the last slide, there's our comparison of where we came from in 2000. These are census data. We didn't make these up, we didn't create them in the back office, straight from the census. Just under 6,000 total households 19 years ago. Again, you see the household size really hasn't changed that much in Newnan, only from 2.6 to 2.5. Slight change in the households that have children under 18, again, great place to live, raise a family. Here's the one that may surprise you just a little bit. In 2000, our owner occupied units was 47%, and our renter occupied units was actually 53%. You're like, wow, that may be a little surprising to you a little bit, but if you think about the growth that we've experienced over the last 19 years, it has predominantly been in the single-family market. It's been the last few years where we've seen the apartment proposals and apartment market come back a little stronger, so that number is a little different than what maybe some of you would expect. All right, comprehensive plan, planning for the future. A little bit of background on the plan. We last adopted our plan in 2016. We're required to plan for a 20-year horizon. Those planning requirements were adopted by the Georgia Planning Act in 1989, with major amendments to that act in 2014. I underlined a very critical point of this particular slide that I actually want to read. The comprehensive plan serves as a guide for local government officials, i.e. our elected officials, when making decisions to ensure they support the city's vision for the community. Obviously, the plan is required for us to maintain what they call a QOG, qualified local government status. If we want to receive state and federal funds, we must maintain and adopt a comprehensive plan. But let's be honest, even without that requirement, it's just the right, smart thing to do. City of Newnan can't be successful to ensure services if we don't plan for the future. The next update, we're due, we have to have adopted and sent to the Department of Community Affairs by October of 2021. So, what that means is sometime late next year, probably, we're gonna be kicking off this process again, and I would love to see this type of attendance when we're having those input sessions. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. All right, what's inside the plan? All right, number one, any plan's got a vision statement, right? If you work for a company, and you're putting together goals, you gotta start with a mission statement. "Newnan will continue to successfully blend its historic character and southern charm with progressive and unique lifestyle opportunities, including promoting cultural arts, supporting educational excellence, and sustaining economic development." All right. So, you take that vision statement, we involve the community. Next slide, I'm gonna tell you how we involve the community. That community input process develops needs and opportunities in certain categories such as economic development, capital improvements, housing, land use, transportation. Then, we take all of that information and we develop goals and policies for each of those categories. So, the community input is critical. Then, we develop what we call, and you may hear this body from time to time, updating the short-term work program. Even though the comprehensive plan is a 20-year outlook, we have a five-year work plan that this body updates every year.
Last meeting.
Last meeting. Next, for cities such as Newnan, that charges impact fees to developments, we must have a capital improvements plan. Again, that is the required component for collecting impact fees from new development, such as would be the case in this particular situation if approved by council. And the last component is a future land use map. Future land use map is obviously what it says, and it is one of the primary documents that this body will use when reviewing rezoning and land use matters. All right, back to that community involvement. I want to tell you what we did as a city organization in 2015 and 16 to get input. This body held two public hearings. There was a survey that was put out both digitally and on paper. We had 68 responses.
How many were sent out?
To the, in 2016, yeah, while we have 37,000 residents...
They already sent two.
Yes, uh, that's good. Two interactive workshops at the Newnan Center in Carnegie, and I'm not being, I'm just telling you information that we have here. We had 41 attendees. We had email blasts, we had stakeholders. That was probably the most successful component of our community input, was the stakeholder groups and emailing. We had lobbies. This place set out in the lobby here, upstairs, downstairs, Carnegie Library, et cetera. We had a website, social media presence, and Clay, always being good, running press releases and ads on our opportunities. So, that was the community involvement. Again, we, all of us, need to do better, and I'm pointing fingers right back at us as well, okay? And we're gonna have that opportunity in about a year or so. All right, the comp plan. Talk a little bit real quickly about goals and policies. I'm not gonna bore you tonight, 'cause I know you're here on the project, okay? There were a total of 42 goals and policies listed under those five areas, but I'm not gonna talk about those five areas, but I am gonna focus a little bit on housing. So, this is straight out of the comp plan. Here are the goals that were listed in the comprehensive plan for housing. Consider mill housing redevelopment and infill lots to increase downtown housing stock. Include a mixture of uses within parking deck development areas. Use amenities, materials, sizes, et cetera, as key factors in ensuring quality housing development. Protect existing historic residential neighborhoods in downtown and the surrounding historic districts. Encourage and support development of multifamily slash lofts with emphasis on commercial adaptive use redevelopment and near-integrated amenities and other uses. Encourage and support opportunities for affordable residential development in and near downtown. Use existing resources to meet the needs of group, personal care homes, traditional homeless shelter space. And last, anticipate and prepare for high-end housing needs. That list right there tells me that we've got almost every base covered. We got everything from homeless shelter space, high-end housing, affordable housing, protecting historic districts, mixed use, variety, diversity, et cetera. All right, how does the comp plan refer specifically to this particular location, what we refer to as the Brown Steel Site, if we've been here for a while, or the Caldwell-Tanks location? The five-acre site, which is the site on the west side of the railroad, is identified as a site that quote-unquote "needs attention," and that's listed under our needs and opportunities under the land use component of the plan. The same five-acre site is also called out as a quote-unquote "future mixed-use development" under the goals and policies under economic development portion of the plan. As far as the future land use map, interestingly enough, both the tracks, the five-acre and the one-acre tract, is shown as commercial. In the public input section, in those surveys, we, I searched through, and we found that this site was mentioned three times, and I didn't want to leave it out for the night's meeting. The three quotes were exactly, "redevelop along the lines of the old city hall on Ponce de León in Atlanta," Ponce City Market. I think most of us know what that is. Also, possible recreational center, and the last one here is pretty creative, "create an indoor greenhouse to grow vegetables and organic hydroponics." So, we get all sorts of comments in our public input sections. So, that's how this particular site was mentioned and referenced in the comprehensive plan, which is a tool this body's gonna use and may help to make this decision. All right, let's go to the livable centers initiative. You may have heard the applicant, you may have heard other people refer to what we call the LCI study, and whether this plan conforms or doesn't conform. Again, the LCI, Livable Centers Initiative, in 2003, the city was awarded a grant by the Atlanta Regional Commission, you say, $120,000, to study the downtown area. And you can see, if you're not real familiar with the map, downtown, a lot of our east side neighborhoods, down past the railroad track, up to the west Georgia area. Actually, it's one of the larger, probably, LCI territories that you'll see allowed to be studied. Typically, it's a little more precise. But what we looked at were land use patterns, development patterns, transportation, economic development, housing, and historic preservation. And why cities are interested in the LCI grant is, once you go through it, you become eligible for additional transportation dollars for projects inside of this district. We have made two applications so far for transportation dollars inside of this district. One is being worked on, it's successful. The other one was denied. One is our famous intersection coming into town at Clark, Temple, et cetera. We all know that intersection. And the other one, we were looking at extending a streetscape project from west, east Washington on into downtown. That one was denied. But anyway, a little more about the LCI public engagement. We were more successful on the LCI component, which is interesting. I think because it was downtown-oriented, it created an interest. So, we had 37 stakeholder interviews over two days. That was face-to-face interviews with 37 stakeholders. The survey, much better than the last one, produced 313 responses. We distributed flyers throughout the community, both in English and Spanish, and we had four public workshops. Again, much, much better participation with this particular study back in 2013. All right, Caldwell-Tanks, how was it referenced in the LCI study? All right, the consensus of the feedback, again, from surveys and the stakeholders, seemed to be that the site be developed as mixed-use and/or commercial. They're calling it a 5.5-acre site, and the reason, we copied and pasted this stuff out of these documents so that we wouldn't misspeak, misrepresent, was identified under the Growth and Redevelopment Chapter as rehabilitation and new construction for mixed-use development, including housing, commercial, specialty retail, entertainment, and open space. That same site was also shown as mixed-use predominantly residential on a future land use map that's included inside of the LCI. That is not the future land use map that is used in the rezoning processes, but it's still information that I wanted to present tonight. There were three concept plans presented for this site, and I want to real quickly show you these three concepts. Concept A, the first thing I want to point out on Concept A, that it was preserving the historic office and warehouse building along the railroad. It was proposing that that become a mixed-use with retail and office. It was proposing a larger commercial center, and it referenced it as a potential grocery store slash pharmacy, kinda a little more of a, I don't use the term bigger box, but that's kinda the way it was laid out. And then, the development of loft residential, trying to reuse the structures in the existing manufacturing facility. That was Concept A. Concept B, big difference up top is it wasn't saving the entire original building, only saving the front part, more the office component of the old RDCO facility. As far as the mixed-use up along East Broad, it was more of a storefront, more keeping in lines with a central business district type of development that you're familiar with in downtown. Demoing the rest of the facility, and down along the South Biddy Corridor, attached residential, as you can see there, D, three levels. The last concept, and which is the concept I think the applicant has used and showed in their presentation, as their proposal is most similar to, to a certain extent, also only preserved a portion of the existing facility, and then added all up on East Washington, East Broad, excuse me, a mixed-use, commercial, retail on the bottom floor, apartments on top, townhomes. You see the townhomes here in the light, what color is that? Yellow, I guess you could say, and then a variety of different attached residential and a parking deck. One thing that these concept plans did not show us, or did not elaborate on, was density. We don't have any information about how many units were proposed, how much floor area was proposed for office or commercial. It simply was a land use plan, and there was even a disclaimer in the actual LCI that these were just three possibilities, and there's multiple other possibilities. But I did want to show those to you. All right, the site, both the five-acre, five-plus acre site and the one-acre site are currently zoned what we call CBD, Central Business District. You ask, what does that permit? Well, I'm not gonna sit here and read the entire zoning ordinance and the permitted uses, but generally, office and retail is what it permits. It also allows apartments above storefront. In certain areas, it allows apartments or residential living on the first floor. There is no off-street parking requirement in the Central Business District, but new developments are required to build with that storefront look, pushed up to the sidewalk, not your traditional suburban look with parking in the front. So, that's basically a general overview of the CBD zoning category. All right, the project. I don't think I'd spend much time here. I think you're all aware of the proposal by the TRG Group. It is about 6.667 acres, I think, to be exact, two tracks, 348 residential units, 41 of which have been proposed on the east side of the railroad, 5,600 square feet of adaptive reuse in the old office, 13,500 square foot of adaptive reuse, and when I say that, it's gonna be office-retail-type uses that haven't been determined, in the old warehouse, 579 parking spaces, 486 of which are in a deck, and 93 surface parking spaces, 48 of which are on the east side of the railroad. All right, that's the project. I don't think I need to go in any more detail on the project. So, here's your chance, all right? You see the question up there? We certainly want and value your input. You see the question? I thought through this question, and I thought, how can I word this question? But I just got down to the point, and I'm gonna ask it very simply. What changes would you like to see made to the proposed project? I don't think I can make it any simpler than that, and as the mayor said when we started, we heard you, we heard the concerns, we heard the general opposition. So, that's what we're looking for tonight, suggestions, input. And tonight's gonna be a little bit different. We're gonna lift the 15 minutes. You know, we're not gonna be here talking for just 15 minutes. We're gonna give you an opportunity to be heard. That being said, we just simply ask that we all respect each other's time, right? It's not gonna be fair if someone stands here for 30 minutes, an hour, and no one else gets heard, 'cause none of us want to be here all night. Anyway, we want to hear you without restrictions, but let's please try to, you know, be courteous and respectful, and I know you can do that. Couple other changes. You're not gonna come to the podium. We're gonna bring a microphone to you. We're gonna make it easy. So, if you raise your hand, Haskell's gonna be bringing the microphone around.
We do ask you to stand up.
Yes, and if you could stand up, and please, just for the record, identify yourself for the record, and give us your suggestions, your input. Now, don't be surprised, since I'm moderating this particular session, I may ask you a question. If you just come up and say, "I'm opposed," I may ask you to get a little more specific. So, it may be a communication back and forth a little bit. If you don't feel comfortable speaking, we have comment cards for you. We have comment cards and pens. Fill out your comments, put them in the box when you leave, and what we're gonna do is, August the 6th, when we return, we're gonna be presenting a presentation back with a summary of tonight's findings, followed by a presentation by the applicant who's sitting here listening tonight to this input session, okay? Everybody good?
Does everybody have comment cards? Who needs a comment card?
Yeah, we got the comment cards, they're coming, they're coming in.
They're coming in?
Coming in.
Okay. I hope everybody's okay with what we're trying to do here.
Good.
Less formal, we want to be transparent, we want to hear you. Is Ms. Green gonna be the first one to...
You know, in the information that you sent out...
If you'll stand, please, if you don't...
Ma'am, hold on one second, ma'am.
You didn't comment that this is all you wanted us to say, so most of us are not prepared to just answer those questions. So, you know, what I've got...
Could you speak into the microphone, so...
I'm sorry. Most of us who wanted to speak tonight against the apartments were not given that information, that that's all y'all were looking for. So, that's not what I've got to say. So, I'm just saying, you know, to get here tonight and find out that's what you want, 'cause that's not what you sent me today either.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
Would love to hear from you.
Great.
Do you like to offer some suggestions?
I did. Susan Green, I live at 26 West Washington, my husband's about the fifth generation Newnanite, and at last week's city council meeting, Mayor Brady said that this has been brought to the community, that this has brought the community together more, with more people attending than he's ever seen. Our local newspaper and some residents in the community took issue with the slogan on the yard sign citing "City of Homes, Not Apartments" as judgmental and divisive. That was never, ever the intent of these signs. It was the opposition to these 348-plus apartments proposed for our historic residential district in historic downtown. In 2017, the Atlanta Journal interviewed City Councilman Shell about the City of Homes, and I would like to share portions of that article. The City of Homes sign, which behind you says "City of Homes," which hangs at the top of the Carnegie Library downtown, is a reference to the city's most famous nickname and a nod to its reputation for having beautiful, well-preserved homes. The phrase is frequently used as both a formal and informal title, with "City of Homes" even appearing on the city's official crest. It's unknown exactly when Newnan was studied, the City of Homes, but a city spokesman says the Carnegie Library sign dates back to at least the 1920s. The local newspapers haven't reported... The local newspapers haven't reported on anyone being offended by that. Nunnan works hard to live up to its moniker, and the government and private owners have protected and refurbished many of Nunnan's most charming buildings. In the article, Mr. Shell, who has lived in the town most of his life, says, "These well-maintained homes have been a local trademark for decades. It was always that way when I was a kid," he said. "When you came into town, there were several really nice houses, that's the first impression you got." Many of these homes predate the Civil War, when the railway came to the area and new people and businesses began moving in. In 1860, Nunnan had a population of just 946 people, but these residents had already begun to build large spacious homes in the area surrounding the town courthouse. During the war, Sherman's march to the sea destroyed cities across the state, but Nunnan removed the general's path between Atlanta-Savannah remained unharmed. My mother always said Sherman intentionally didn't burn the homes, Shell said, but the main reason they were preserved is just that Sherman never came this way. After the war ended, Nunnan returned to business and worked to rebuild the town's pre-war economic prosperity. From the 1880s to the early 1900s, the RD Co. Manufacturing Company became the city's main construction firm and was responsible for most of the houses built during that time. While some of the buildings have taken on second lives as museums and funeral homes, Shell says the majority of the town's historic homes are still private residences. Residents have shown up to these meetings in record numbers to voice their opposition. Mr. Shell, who is still absent tonight, you were absent from the meeting last week, but about 200 residents were here to oppose this. Many voters left the meeting angry, feeling this decision has already been made. They also attended the planning and zoning meeting where this was denied unanimously. Voters are showing up because they want to know how City Councilman Mayor Brady feel about Nunnan and the historical significance of the moniker "City of Homes." Do you plan to preserve and protect the character and integrity of our historic districts? Are neighborhoods in downtown as you pledged, or will you allow Nunnan to become just another city of high-density apartments? The red ribbons people wear are in opposition to these apartments. The community overwhelmingly opposes this. What do all of y'all want your legacy to be?
Thank you. Next?
A gentleman in the back. We can still be as formal to say, Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and you too, Cletus, well done. My name is Gary Martin, I'm on 39 Jackson Street, right up the way here, Jackson and Posey. Someone told me tonight they saw me working out there just about every day over the last two months, and they're true, I have, one thing after another. I bought that home, as I mentioned in an earlier meeting, as one of the major historic homes here, and I love Atlanta. I love this area. I love Nunnan better than all of that, because I came from Atlanta and the Decatur area for 25 years, having been there. And tonight, as I walked in here and I saw these people again, I was not sure that this many people would show up again, and they have, and I think it's an outstanding testament to Nunnanites and people here who really want to be heard. Mr. Mayor, if I had known that you would ask us to speak on something as you'd proposed already, I think I and a couple of others would have already been a little bit better prepared, so I would urge you maybe to, if you want something specific like that, please allow us some time to prepare, because I have some thoughts, but I don't have them the way I would like to propose them, but I did hear from a gentleman tonight, I won't point him out, who has an absolutely fantastic idea, and I hope it gets somehow placed before you tonight, about what could be done with this site.
He'll be given that opportunity.
Good. I'm not going to read everything that I had prepared, because it does, in fact, reiterate some of the things that I have said before. We talked about density. I won't hit that too hard, but I will say that the density issue here is one that's serious, in my opinion. And there are others as well. The ownership of this development and the management of this development was said by Mr. Alexander to be something they planned to be around for some 10 years. That's what I heard, I know several others did too. I will tell you that, from my perspective and what I see on the website and what I know to be true, is that many of the developments they have sold, or rather, have built and developed and managed, have been sold within roughly a year's time from when they developed them. And I would just say to you that, what difference does that make? What difference it makes to me is the sincerity of someone who stands up in front of us and tells us they want to be involved in this community for that length of time, when their track record shows something totally different. And I would say to you that that's important. It's important from a standpoint of honesty.
To use a reply, opportunities on tax credits to this proposed project, yes or no? You did. Okay, thank you. Last week Councilman DeBose asked a great question. He said, "Why us? Why Newnan? Why are we so special?" Well, after evaluating try, he really didn't get a very satisfactory answer. And I may have a portion of the answer to the question for him. It's going to take about three minutes to explain. You're going to glaze over. In 2019, Congress passed the Jobs Act. It was an economic stimulus bill, and one of the features was the Opportunities Zone tax credit. The government identified almost 8,800 qualifying census tracts throughout the nation based upon low income and poverty rates. Georgia has 260 of these qualifying census tracts in 83 counties. Newnan-Coweta has two of them. Carrollton, LaGrange, Columbus, Thomasville, and Griffin also have qualifying zones. Essentially, the Tax Act says that if you create jobs, and in this case, these would be construction jobs, build development, and you keep it for 10 years. This is a very simple explanation of the law. For approximately 10 years, you will owe no taxes or capital gains on your profit. Zero. It is entirely legal, and it is a great deal for our developer. This is capitalism at work. Our developer has told us that he believes the project qualifies for these credits, and obviously, this is the reason why they're interested in the project. And what this means is that he will sell after 10 years. He'll keep his entire profit, and he won't have to pay any capital gains. And how does this affect us? Well, think of the project as a giant pie. And inside this pie are lots and lots of apartments and a little bit of commercial retail. We, as concerned citizens who live in the town, say to ourselves, "This project isn't exactly what we want for our fair city and its future. We want some other flavors in the pie besides lots and lots of apartments and a little bit of commercial retail. We'd also like some condominiums, some townhomes, maybe even some office condominiums. A nice flavorful mixture of all of these would make a great pie. It would be a real crown jewel for our city." Wouldn't that be great? So, we asked Mr. Developer Man over here if he would kindly modify his plan and expand his vision to include these other ingredients: condos, townhomes, and office condos. And Mr. Developer Man over there wants to keep his tax break, and he has to very honestly answer us, "No, I can't. If I sell condos and townhomes, I'm selling little pieces of my big tax-qualified pie. And if I do that, I will lose my tax credit and one of my major reasons for doing this project." So what this means is, is that we have a choice, or more correctly, the city council has a choice. I'd like to provide them with multiple options, but the tax law only provides for these two: vote yes for a project that none of us really likes because we're afraid that something even worse will be built, which isn't going to happen because no one is ever going to manufacture anything on that side again; or the economics won't support it; or you can vote no, demand a better future for Newnan than this very limited, overly dense, grossly inappropriate, nasty tasting, unimaginative pie would provide. That Councilman DeBose is why they selected Newnan. It's all about the tax credit. Capitalism, it's a good thing, just not in this case.
Actually, did a very good explanation of the federal Opportunities Zone, so thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Swope, and I currently live at 13 Woodland Drive. I grew up on College Street. My first job was on Court Square. I currently work in the Justice Center. Newnan is my home. I see many friends in the audience. I see former neighbors. I see current neighbors. I thought I was the token millennial, but there's about seven of us. But my question throughout this project, as I've spoken to the architect and seen the plans, and I asked this to the city council, the main goal is to increase millennials. The idea is, there were studies done by the city, and we were told we want to get to millennials, and we're the next generation. We understand that. We are the future of this town. But the problem is, you don't start with the place to live. You start with the draw. And I love Newnan. I go out in Newnan. Y'all have seen me out in Newnan. I go to the restaurant on some Court Square. I know most of the providers by their first name and last name. But my question is, what is our draw? How do we fill 348 apartments with the target audience of millennials, my generation? Because we've been told we don't want single-family homes, and I can't say that it's not true. But we have these opportunities to create a community where we can draw them without 348 apartments as the starting block. So my question is, why would, why do we, how do we get millennials to choose Newnan, to need this kind of residence? Because right now, I hate it, but I don't think we're there. We have four or five opportunities a year to have open container on the Court Square, which I'm for that. I think we draw millennials down with that. You look at Carrollton. You look at LaGrange. They have fantastic amphitheaters. We have a small one, but we haven't had Charlie Daniels. We haven't had any money. We haven't had movies on the Court Square. We are, well, we've had some movies on the Court Square. I shouldn't say we've had enough. But we don't have the things that draw who our target audiences. I don't like the idea of 348. I like the idea of mixed-use development. I like one that blends in with the community and doesn't block out our views of our historic homes or cause our neighbors to suffer by having congestion on their streets where they can't get out of the parking lots. Or their driveways, rather. But my biggest question to the council and to everybody is, how do we intend to fill 348 apartments with millennials when we don't have the draw yet? We want it. We need it. We need to continue. I chose to come back to this town. I grew up here, and I plan to spend the rest of my life here. So my question is, is this the right choice at this time? Because if we build the homes and don't have the draw to get my generation here, we're going to have empty homes, or we're going to have to lower the rent on them, or we're going to have to end up Section 8-ing them to get them filled, so we don't have empty apartments. So my question is, is now the time? Do we have the draw to fill? Do we need to modify it to a smaller apartment complex with mixed-use development? Do we need to ensure we have the businesses that will go in there before we approve and get it done? Because hopes and dreams will get us far, but they won't get us filled. And so I think if, before this project is approved, we have to look at ourselves, look deep into our souls, and say, "Do we have the draw to get the target audience here? Or are we trying to give them a place to live without giving them a reason to live here?" I know the reason to live here. The people in this room who live here know the reasons to live here. But if we want to pull people from downtown Atlanta where they had 600 restaurant options of Beltline, we have the link. We want the link to be popular. But on Beltline, you got restaurants at every stop. At Palm City Market, you have restaurants, you have shopping, and you have homes. But it blends. It fits. And so the question is, do we give people the reason to live here first, or the place to live first? And I challenge you and say, "We have to have the reason to live here first." And until we have the reason to draw more millennials in my generation, we are setting ourselves up for failure by putting nearly 350 apartments that we cannot fill. Thank you.
City evening. My name is Katie Chapman. I live at 71 East Broad Street, which is directly across from the apartment complex. While Newnan is a rapidly growing town, it has managed to retain its small-town charm. Specifically, the downtown area and surrounding historic and old residential neighborhoods can make this plain. The steel could be preserved and increased through the management of its housing stock by utilizing traditional neighborhood design. Homeownership is looked upon by society in a positive light. In fact, homeownership rates are often used as an economic indicator, with higher rates representing a more stable economy. The city has recently seen decreasing homeownership rates. If this sounds familiar, it's because it's an excerpt from the city's comprehensive plan, and each of you, with the exception of Councilman Gilliam, who are part of planning this comprehensive plan. We realize this is contrary to what the newspaper has been publishing, as it recently published three articles using studies conducted by the rental industry. Certainly, the rental industry is not unlike the chocolate industry, promoting its own interests, but that isn't relevant to Newnan and what's best for our community. This proposal is not consistent with the goals of this city. It isn't compatible with our residential historic district, the historic architecture of downtown, or our current zoning, which allows a maximum of 12 units per acre. At 52 units per acre, this is more than four times the highest density allowed in our city. I am a millennial also. There have been several of us at each of these meetings. Some of us are new homeowners, and others are currently saving with the goal of homeownership in mind. Most of us have lived in an apartment at some point, but that isn't our goal. We could live in Atlanta where there is greater variety of shopping and life if that's what we wanted. This isn't like the movie Field of Dreams, where the theme was, "If you build it, they will come." That reference to baseball field, we're talking about apartments, and this isn't a movie. We are millennials. We work. We drive cars. And we eat and shop downtown when we can. We are educated, but at this point in our careers, most of us have salaries that are half of what this developer claims. We don't stay at home in our pajamas. We drive cars to jobs across town to provide vital services to our community. We work in your hospitals, in your schools, and other industries. Some of us do commute to Atlanta to work, but we prefer to live here. This is where we want to settle down and raise our family. Filling our community with apartments will change that. Just look next door at Fayette County. The AJC recently ran an article showing that Fayette County has the largest flight of millennials out of the town of any place in the whole United States. I am one of those millennials who left Fayette County. We love Newnan, and we are against this proposal. Why not a boutique hotel? A successful amphitheater like Columbus, LaGrange, and Tuscaloosa has successfully integrated within their historic downtown. Build a parking deck with townhomes and mixed use. We want the park on the one-acre lot we were promised in the comprehensive plan. This will be your legacy.
Thank you for your suggestion, Katie Chapman. You got a gentleman in the back here, Hasko.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jason Kanter. I don't have any strange analogies. I would like to keep on topic also. If this does go forward, has anybody taken into consideration to what impact traffic might be going into downtown? That's one concern I have as a business owner. Obviously, as a business owner, I want more people. I want more customers. As a homeowner, I don't necessarily want that many apartments. But I live where I live because I know what's going to go next to me. Certain things are in place. The zoning as it is right now, I don't think anybody would want that much retail with residential above. I don't think anybody would want that as it is right now, without being rezoned. And I'm saying that as a business owner. There's a lot of things to take into consideration. I'm just kind of curious what would happen to downtown during construction. Does anybody have any info on that? Well, I think what we could do, Mr. Kanter, and thank you for your, the applicant is going to have an opportunity tonight, if they so choose to respond, they're going to be given a much longer opportunity August the 6th. So they're taking notes, and maybe that they choose to address those questions at that point in time, but, and for your questions and comments and suggestions.
Hi, my name is Hannah Chapman. I'm a recent graduate from Alabama with my graduate degree. I don't think I'm really a target demographic for their poverty, as I make much less than they say everyone there will make. But that's beside the point, I guess. When people in my class were talking about where they were going to go after graduation, where they were going to find their first job and their first place to live, people talked about going home, somewhere they loved, or finding someplace with a good work-life balance, somewhere to have some, actually, I'm not a high school graduate. I'm a graduate from graduate school. So, little bit of difference. Anyway, as I always say, people were looking for a nice place to work, live, play. That is what we need, not, they weren't looking for, "Oh, this town has some apartments. Maybe I'll go live there." People wanted to live somewhere they either loved or was going to have a great place to go out and do something fun. What we need is not more apartments. What we need is something to draw people here, whether it's something like a park, whether it's something like a baseball stadium, whether it's an amphitheater like Tuscaloosa built. Actually, they built it on remediated landfill, literally a garden stump. It now brings in big names from every major music demographic. They actually made, were in the black their first year, made money off of it. So that would be something that actually might bring people to our town, whereas apartments are not going to bring new people to our town.
Good chat with your question.
I'd like to make an observation, first of all. We reached out to the city on numerous occasions this week to find out the format, and this was never mentioned. We are homemakers. We are business owners. We are your community. We're your constituents. We're a vote and message to you into office. We're at a disadvantage here. We don't have lawyers. We don't have the opportunity to present just whatever we want to tell you at any time. I know most of you have heard from me pretty much on a daily basis for a while. I didn't even know six months ago that you were the mayor. I didn't have any reason to know. I would vote for you, Mr. Gilliam. I met Mr. Gilliam when he came to my house shortly after we built it and asked to put signs in our yard. I said, "Well, tell me why I should let you put a sign in my yard." He said, "Well, first of all, you can't vote for me. I represent the suburb area, but I'd like to put one in your yard anyway because of your proximity to the public place." He told me he was a veteran, and I said, "Done. Place a sign. If anyone serves our country, I'd like to serve you in return." Right now, I don't feel very sorry. We bought this lot from Chuck, our neighbor. We went through the whole process of getting our house approved, our house planned. We chose a local developer. We chose a local architect. We built a stock plan that belonged to Michigan. It went through the approval process with the city to make sure that it fit some beautiful architectural minds of the historic houses. My children came to Newnan High School, my youngest, too. They both graduated 2014, 2015 as valedictorians and star students of Newnan High School. They could have kicked me in the tail when we said that we were going to build a house in Newnan, because they begged us the entire time they were in high school, begged us. "Mom, that one's for sale." "No, your daddy is not handy. We cannot trust him with a hand or two." So, here we are in Newnan. We, I don't know if you know what that property looked like, but Chuck will tell you, he doesn't like yard work. Fortunately, we do. That's my thing. That's mine, and then you were mayor, because I prefer to be outside of my yard. I reached out to Cletus and Hasko about my missing curb. I'm very angry about my missing curb. Your comprehensive plan addresses missing curbs, broken sidewalks, dilapidated buildings, broken windows, trash. It kind of rises my neighborhood as a slum. It does. That meets the definition of a slum. Mr. Alexander, I have nothing against him personally, but I'm going to tell you. He asked if he could tell you about how you can speak to us about this proposal. We'd already spoken with Lance, and he walked up and he said, "Mr. Alexander, remember that I'm in the South. Use your manners." So, Mr. Alexander came in, and he told me it was all time. All right? The next thing he told me was, "You have a very nice neighborhood." I took offense to that. And you know what? The one great thing about this project has been, it has forced me to become a part of this community. It has given me an opportunity to meet Ms. Bailey, Ms. Florence, Mr. Ball. Ms. Ball pulled up her shirt and showed me his scar. Were you happy? Was that the marks, sir? Sure did. You know, I've met some really, really nice people. But what I haven't gotten is help for our neighborhood for the things that we do need help with. We've made a breakthrough. We are a community. We're not just a neighborhood. We're not a group of historic homes. We are custom, already held homes, for most part. Our neighborhood is recovering, and it's coming together, and we are very proud to be the Old Town Historic District. We're very proud to be a part of this community as a whole in Newnan. Most of the time when you send me out my yard, I have on a shirt that says, "I love Newnan," and I truly do. But the city has not been able to help us with things like our broken curb. They said, "There's no money for that." They said, "It's our fault." When the housing industry went to bid, we were just happy that our road paving came in under budget. They were supposed to tear the asphalt up, but it ended up on top of my curb. It caused flooding and horrendous mess. But anyway, these apartments, they're just out of place. Have any of you visited the Loop Project? Okay, well, we have. We drove to the Loop. It's nothing like Newnan. Very few places are. Newnan is a very special place, and we really need to protect that. We have this small-town charm that's talked about that the city wants to protect. We have the architectural structures, you know? It's a beautiful place. These apartments might be suited for somewhere else, but they're not suited for this location. I agree. An amphitheater is one of the things mentioned in the city's comprehensive plan. An amphitheater, a park, a boutique hotel, any of those things. Townhomes, townhomes with mixed use, we'll go for that, but not 348 apartments.
My name is Phyllis Graham, and I've been in Newnan 10 years, and I also just adore Newnan. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I will address Mr. Phillips' question, because what he posted, I thought was very fair. He said, "What would you like to do to compromise and to make this project doable and bring the community together?" I love what Ms. Chapman has said, what Ms. Green said, Mr. Martin. I love all of those comments, because this is why we're here, to bring the community together. To get back to his question, is, I feel like the bargaining chip to make this project work is that lovely park across from the railroad tracks, a connection to the link, where we can connect other parts of Newnan to downtown and create a green space, and maybe the apartment count would be 295. I do know many people that choose to live in an apartment, and they are not, you know, looking for slum living. They're looking for a different quality of life, a different way of living, not having responsibility to a yard, maybe being able to walk everywhere they go. I don't, I'm not going to give any statistics on how many of these people would live there and commute to Atlanta. But the whole point is, I've heard this so many times, tonight, the other week, the question is, "Why Newnan?" The reason people would come to Newnan, and I respect what Mr. Swope said, is because it is Newnan. I meet people in our shop downtown all the time who come to Newnan, they feel the experience and love it. They're like, "What could we do to get here?" So by being Newnan, we are creating that draw in itself. And I also just want to appreciate what the city is trying to do here, and the fact that that building that acreage has sat there, and nothing is being done. So I applaud the opportunity for something to happen that will help our whole community and bring more young people, because that's who will have to carry on, our community, is younger people, the millennials. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. I think we got it over here, yes?
My name's Chuck Landry. I live at 71 East Broad Street. I don't work in the town that I believe, and there's a reason for that. I believe it's a town that's just covered with apartments that 30 years ago were full of high-income pilots and doctors, and now they, it becomes a very simple business decision in 10 years or 15 years. Do we fix them, or do we lower the rent? And when your density is so high, and it's got to be full, we will start lowering rent, it just gets worse and worse and worse. And what happens, what happens is, ultimately, one of these buildings catches on fire. Ultimately, one of these buildings catches on fire. And the people that are owning it at that time, these gentlemen may be great guys, I don't know, but whoever owns them in 20 or 30 years, they don't even replace the building. They tear it down, they pocket the money, and lower the rent again, because now it's not as attractive. And I see it over and over and over again. Does anyone remember Camelot on Old National Highway 30 years ago? That was high-dollar apartments that were kind of configured like townhomes. If you hadn't been there in the last 10 or 12 years, you need to ride through it. Biscayne, the same thing. Embarcadero Park Apartments. Abandoned apartments with boards up on them, people being evicted out of them. And again, this was high-dollar apartments. And the, and again, this was high-dollar apartments. I know there are costs associated with coming down on the density. You know, maybe the city can do something to help alleviate some of that, make it more commercial, give us that park on the other side. Uh, I'd also like to see some, some whoever and whatever winds up in there pay the city back with additional extra parking to help support the downtown. Uh, because there's not enough and we all know that. And parking at the depot is a ridiculous idea as, as a solution. That's impossible. So, or, and on-street parking. I mean, there's a ton of vehicles that pass up and down that, that road every day. But I, you know, I think a lot of people have said, "We want something in there, but this is just not it."
Thank you for your comments. And thank you for your service, too. We got, uh, Mike, can you defer, please? We, I think we had, you're...
Ladies first.
Ladies first. Mike could be a gentleman.
Oh, boy. Um, I hope my voice sells out. I'm petrified to talk in front of a group, but that's how concerned I am. I have two major concerns. Um, I know, oh, I'm not talking into it.
There you go. It'll help our online...
Oh, my name, oh, yeah. Let's see if I can remember. Uh, my name is Carolyn Masters and I live at forty-nine West Washington Street. I lived in Newman in the sixties, loved it so much, came back in nineteen ninety-two. So, um, I have a couple of major concerns. Um, one is, I know we're talking about rezoning. And once it's rezoned, does the developer or whoever purchased it have to stick to what they propose or can they deviate? That's one's concern. My other concern is that looking at the other projects that they've done, I don't see any green space. I just see bricks and high-rise. So, it concerns me that if they're proposing this, why are they proposing something that's different than what we're seeing?
I'd be happy to answer the first question about the deviation and, and thank you, thank you for your comments. Yeah, we're gonna go over here for a couple and then we'll come around. But let me answer your question about, um, after rezoning and deviation real quickly. Traditionally, in a rezoning application, uh, the applicant will submit what we call proffer conditions, which is basically, uh, a statement of what will be delivered. Uh, council will, within the ordinance to rezone the property, would list those conditions that would apply to the property. So, yes, what they propose is what they would have to deliver if council were to approve it. So, thank you again for your comments and suggestions about green space. Uh, we got Mike and then I think we had Brant there and I think we had one over here, so...
Okay. Uh, my name is Michael Miller and I've lived or owned a home in College Temple Historic District for the last twenty-eight years. Um, I'd like to offer a few observations and hopefully some ideas that can maybe move us forward. First of all, again, I agree with Mr., I think it was Mr. Frost over here. I think I have nothing against the developers themselves. Um, I looked at their website, I looked at the, at the various projects. Um, the district in Duluth, the Weston Village in Nashville, the Crest at Laurel Canyon in Canton. Um, I looked at most all of those. They seem to be attractive developments. They're, pretty much they're on greenfield space. They're not an urban solution. They're a suburban-type development with basically where you had plenty of space to develop, um, lots of apartments and provide parking. This is an urban environment in a downtown historic, uh, with lots of historic neighborhoods around them. So, um, I have nothing against you. I just, I think this particular plan that you're proposing is not appropriate for, for Newman. And so, um, I, um, wanna go back, we've referred to this as the Caldwell Tank, uh, area, but it's, most of us know it as the RD Coal, at least historically. It began in eighteen fifty-four as the Colan Barn Sawmill. Uh, the business moved to where it's currently at, at the Atlanta West Point Railroad. It produced, uh, sawmill, cornmills, boilers, engines, uh, became a manufacturer of steel, aluminum, alloy. At one time, it was the second-largest water tower manufacturer in the United States. And for many of the homes built in Newman, a lot of the employees worked at RD Coal. And so, when we get the, the moniker of City of Homes, it's ironic that the RD Coal really facilitated a lot of that, of the nice homes that have been built in, in Newman. So, in terms of what I would think would be reasonable request, now whether, I guess, it's, whether it's reasonable or not would be whether it would, whether the developer would be willing to do this. But, but I would ask that if, if the developer's not willing to do this, because I think most people here wanna see significant changes to the plan, if they're not willing to do it, I would ask the city council, the mayor, Brady, and everyone else to deny the zoning and let's pull together as a community and court the developer that can, can provide the type of development that we need on this site. Um, I'm familiar with a lot of developments in Atlanta because I, I'm, I'm an architect, I worked in preservation for a number of years. In your LC, um, LCI plan, uh, you referenced the Ponce City Market. Uh, I think that's a great example. Um, there's lots of other examples, I, I had written them down here. Uh, the Bottle Works, Castleberry Hill, there's the Crog City Market. Here in Newman, we have the Newman Lofts, which is literally a block away, which offers the model, I think, that we're looking for is a, a development that's gonna respect, um, the historic buildings that are currently on that site. I looked at your, the plans and different plans keep different aspects of the historic buildings. And I guess specifically, I would like to see, um, the TRG, um, you know, kinda get out of the box and look at other solutions, uh, such as the Fulton Cotton Bag Mill in Cabbage Town. They, by the way, they use preservation tax credits. There's a twenty percent tax credit for the reuse of historic buildings. There's, uh, local tax abatements. There's a whole host of tax credits associated with historic preservation. And, um, and I think having those, if they were put together, you would keep, and I looked again at your LCI plan, buildings numbers one and five, which I think are the, the main, uh, buildings along the railroad tracks, as well as buildings numbers three and four, which, all of that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. They're part of the Downtown Commercial District, which borders Coal Town. And, um, I would like to see you keep buildings one, five, three, and four to incorporate those into an overall development that could have mixed use. I'm, I'm all for mixed use. I think the, your comprehensive plan is a good one. Um, I think we just need to have the right plan at the right time. Uh, I would ask that, um, as much as possible, the plans be in accordance with the, the general preservation standards, which is the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which would qualify you to get preservation tax credits. Um, I would ask, since the buildings on that site is listed on the National Register, that you consult the State Historic Preservation Office to, um, to give guidance about whether your development would actually be compatible with both Coal Town and the Downtown Commercial District. Get their opinion about new construction. I'm not opposed to any all-new construction, but I think it needs to be substantially reduced and that, um, that you work with, uh, the City of Newman. They're planning that, great, Hasko and Cletus, they're great folks to work with to make sure that it's compatible with, uh, the historic district. So, um, again, some of the things have already been said, reduce in density. And obviously, the last one is, you've gotta come up with a viable parking solution that I, right now, I don't see how, under your current plan, that, that, that without offending everybody in here with their parking, that, how that's gonna be resolved. So, um, anyway, I think the historic character of Newman, um, is at stake here. And if we don't respect it and, and do it right, um, and I put this on the city, this is in your hands, and I trust that y'all are gonna make the right decision when it comes to this, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Frost, and I think we had an individual over here and then he would come back over here.
Good evening. My name is Brant Frost. I live at twenty-seven Velma Drive and, uh, ask for just two minutes of your attention. Uh, first, I wanna thank the mayor and the honorable council members for giving us this opportunity to have extended feedback. Uh, I rise to speak as a millennial, joining my colleagues here. There's a lot more of us coming to these events now in there. I'm also a third-generation son of Newman. I was born just up the road, raised here. I hope to continue to live the rest of my life here, raise my family, and eventually be buried here. And I urge you not to retreat from the twenty years, more than twenty years of effort, intentional effort. This, this just didn't happen laissez-faire. We worked very hard, the city did, to preserve the historic downtown area, the courthouse, not to move away from downtown. And if we do this, it will undo a great deal of the work that has been done over the last twenty years. It's been said, there's a lot of ruin in the nation. It's been also said that the work of fifty years can be undone in just a few minutes or a lifetime's reputation can be ruined with one bad mistake. I urge you, thank you. And by the way, I, I'd just like to say is, is, I'm, I'm twenty-nine, but I've been active for many years in politics. It's very encouraging to see so many citizens get up and come to a meeting like this. So, give yourselves a hand, please do. I'll close, just let me close by, by offering a slightly different perspective. And, and I think this input is great and we ought to adopt some version of what has been suggested tonight, but let me just offer a slightly different perspective. I've never run for public office myself, but I have served in many elected positions within political organizations. And had I ever voted for a decision that was opposed by ninety-five percent or close to ninety-five percent of the people who elected me, I don't think I could have continued to serve. I would have had to resign out of principle because as an elected representative, I have to represent my constituents and I owe them something. And remember, these are the same people who elected all of y'all. They were in their right mind when they elected you and they're in their right mind now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frost.
My name is Barbara Wiley. I live downtown at twenty-five Wesley Street. Um, I wasn't prepared to talk, but when you asked that question of what do you want to see there, I, I can give you some answers. I filled out this whole page in just the time. Um, some of it has been mentioned, but, so, please excuse that also. Uh, my preference for the use of this space would be, number one, community use. Open space like we have on Greenville or the First, um, First Avenue Park. Um, some kinda park where children could play. Um, maybe a soccer field. Um, and then an amphitheater. I think that would be great, too. Um, secondly, I'd like, uh, as part of this, I'd like to see it overall community use. Second of all, I thought maybe we could, could put a community recreation center and maybe along with that, put a community swimming pool. Um, then I would go to a shopping district, which, which would consist of small boutiques, um, restaurants, and then possibly some, I don't know, boutique, uh, grocery stores like Whole Foods or Trader Joe's. My next preference would be, um, to have shops on the bottom and have, um, loft apartments above, just one level of them, not multi-story. Um, then I would like to see some single-family homes and along with that, though, I'd like to see it include open space for community use. Um, next, I would like to see, instead of apartments, townhomes, and again, open space for community use. Um, and kinda my last preference or second-to-last would be, um, a considerably lower number of apartments. And this is gonna sound awful to you people, but I would say thirty and then, um, luxury or open space again for the community use. Uh, my last one would be to make it an open parking space. That'd be better than putting, um, more, better use than putting, um, these three-hundred-and-forty-five. Um, my last comment is, um, as councilmen and women, you need to listen to your constituents as the previous speaker said. And if you do not, are not listening to what all these people are saying, then you are not representing us.
Thank you for your suggestions and your comment, ma'am.
My name is John Palmer. I live at nineteen Alpine Drive. Listening here, I think the biggest thing is, we don't like the density and we want homeownership. And you're asking this guy to do this and we heard from the tax credits that he's looking to use, he can't do that. So, the city's trying to make a square peg fit in a round hole and it's not gonna work. So, we had a great presentation tonight from Mr. Frost. And when is the city council gonna hear his or, uh, debate his proposal? Because that's a round hole, or, or a round peg in a round hole. That's what we want, not the proposed plan that's here tonight. So, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor, when are y'all gonna debate his, uh, his ideas?
Well, what we have before us is the public...
I know, but when are you gonna see, we have another proposal idea. When are y'all gonna take that under consideration?
Not until after we make this decision.
Okay.
Can, can, can I explain a little bit? I know it's very important. An applicant under a rezoning request is entitled to due process. We cannot act on other proposals to, actually, what we're doing here tonight is the first time we've ever implemented ever this process to get more feedback. But in doing so, we still have to protect the due process rights of the applicant. So, therefore, what we are gonna be considering when there is a council vote is the proposal or the amended proposal that they may consider submitting. And that, that's what we have to do under the law.
Yeah, well, I didn't see you come up with the first proposal from Mr. Frost. What, what are you guys doing that you, this was not part of the three concepts? Why was that never part of the three concepts?
Uh, the three concepts were developed based upon the public input that I described in, in the session. Um, actually, we never knew Mr., the applicant until...
So, but after, after they do the vote, if the vote's down, then y'all can undertake Mr. Frost's proposal.
At, at that point in time, there are opportunities, but yes, he is entitled to his due process, so therefore, we, we have to do certain things under the law. So, not being defensive, but just trying to explain to you. So, but thank you for standing up your comment.
My name is Scott Frederking. I feel more comfortable hiding behind a podium. Uh, first, Cletus, to talk to you about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, can you, sorry. Uh, agree. Participation was less than ideal. Uh, the product was a good one. Y'all did an excellent job, the staff and the, everyone else who was, who was involved. I believe that by and large, the citizens did agree with the, uh, the goals and the policies. Uh, but I think one of the reasons why we're here tonight is because this project does not conform to that plan. To speak more specifically to the mayor's point about what we would like to see different, uh, I agree with some of the folks who said, "This is a bit of a curveball, but I'll try to do that as best I can." And to be blunt about it, I think what we should do is have them withdraw the application. Having said that, I know that's not realistic. As mentioned earlier, we're all capitalists. We all fully support the downtown businesses. Uh, we want them to prosper. There's nothing wrong with apartments, per se, in the right place at the appropriate density. On LCI report page six dash oh-four, the one-acre tract is specifically excluded from mixed-use design and designated public institutional. You want a specifics on what we should do to change things. Number one, get rid of the one acre, get rid of it. I understand at one point, the city intended to purchase that property for public use as a park. It seems then the city has already made a statement that it has no interest in rental units on that site and the city should maintain that position. Building multi-story rental units on the same block as single-family residences in historic district is not acceptable. If you happen to believe that it is okay to do this, I suggest you look very closely at the applicant's proposal to use a link easement to reduce the buffer to ten feet and reduce required open space by fifty percent. Giving link access to the property, the width of a sidewalk, and calling it public recreation use is questionable. Uh, second point, parking. I know it's a mundane point, but Ms. Donovan's lengthy presentation to the planning commission, which I remind you voted eight to zero to deny the project, noted that the project had elements of LCI Concept C in which it included a, the parking bunker. I strongly recommend the council and planning staff take another look at the proposal and estimates of the number of parking spaces needed for this development and its impact on surrounding businesses and city-county government activities. This will certainly impact anyone traveling to or having business on the east side of the city. Additionally, on page seven and eight, uh, Ms. Donovan's report says, I'm paraphrasing, "It's a whole lot better to have mixed use at the site than completely commercial..." better to have mixed use at the site than completely commercial and our office." I think everyone would agree with that. However, nowhere in any report, plan, or analysis conducted by or agreed to by the city did it ever contemplate a project in which high-density rental units would be the great majority of the square footage to be developed. So, another point, reduce the density. Reduce it down at, at worst, to current density requirements. Next point, the applicant documentation states it makes no attempt at historic reproduction and creates an original architecture that is reflective and timeless, whatever that means. That is certainly in the eye of the beholder. The developer states that in the last meeting, their external facade options are very limited. This is very problematic concerning MDX rezoning standard 6-26. So, another point, make sure that the facades are compatible with the surrounding area. A key argument in favor of rental units is projected need for housing in Newnan due to population growth. There is truth in this. However, we should take the long view and, and about what we are doing. Over the past years, a lot of communities thought it's a great idea to jump on building warehouses and distribution centers to respond to the market. Many of them are having serious second thoughts now, but it's too late for them. Finally, returning to the Honorable Mayor Brady's remarks from the last meeting, we want to determine what's an appropriate project for this incredibly important downtown property. Once approval is given, we will all have to live with the results for as long as we reside in this city. I suggest we thank the residential group for their interest in our town and send them on their way. The development community's interest in this property is very strong, so denying this application should have little impact on those who would want to work with us. This is a great opportunity. We can do better. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freder King. If, if we can focus on wrapping this up, I, I know we've had great participation and great input, but if we, if we can get a few more speakers and try to wrap this thing up, I think...
Okay, Ms. McBride, I know, has a wife.
Yes, absolutely.
That possession is nine tenths.
Watch out.
So, that's important. And then we'll take two more speakers, and then give the applicant an opportunity, if he wishes, I, I kind of thought that was not going to happen tonight, but if he wishes to, for a short rebuttal. Ms. McBride?
My name is Chris McBride. I live at 23 Buchanan Street. I've not, we've lived in Coweta County for, since we were young, and we're not anymore. I've never been to a city council meeting, and I have a couple of questions about procedures. When you vote or prior to your vote, will we be able to ask you, George, why did you vote for or against? Ray, why did you? And then are you obligated to give us your reasons?
Could I address that?
You sure can. I ask you, too, Mr. Brady.
When you, when you say, "Ask us how we voted," so I, I assume you're asking that question after we have voted.
Why you voted yes or no for approving this fiasco?
Well, you're making an assumption there that I don't think you should, but I don't think anybody in this room should make any assumption about any position anyone on this council has taken. Please don't do that.
No.
That's the reason we're trying to be transparent and bring you forward, to, to give you an opportunity to speak as much and as loudly as you possibly can. We want to make sure that we have that information.
Please, thank you.
I, I am pleasantly surprised with the way y'all have handled this this evening. I just wonder, after you register your vote, are we able...
I personally would be happy to answer that question.
You, y'all will?
Y'all, I can't speak for them. I will personally be happy to answer that question to anyone who asks me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank all of y'all.
Thank you for your comment. Again, a couple more. We, you ready?
I have my graphic.
All right, yeah, well, stand up then. Right here, right here.
So, I always end up getting up, my name's Frances Kidd, and I live at 18 Buchanan Street. Buchanan Street, Chris, it's obvious you didn't start out. Buchanan, not Buchanan. Anyway, I want to, I never have any, I don't have statistics. I have always sort of have to say what's in my heart. I want to charge the city council with something, because if you look around this room, like I've been doing, Newnan's past, present, and future is here. And you keep hearing that people come here because it's desirable. You've got to keep looking ahead. At what point is it going to become not desirable anymore? So, I think that this is great that y'all are doing that. I think it's great that everybody is here tonight. And I hope, I'm going to start, I mean, I haven't, I've not lived here in a long time. I didn't, I grew up here and then I left. And some of us know the reason why, because I think I said it the last time, there was nothing really to do. So, it's better now, it's so much better now. But we're going to, I don't want to get to that point where we look back and say, where did we lose control of it? And at what time did it become then undesirable?
Thank you. All right. One more. Someone's going to wrap it up for, for you guys for public input? All right, right there. Thank you.
So, my name is Katie Knowles. I don't live in downtown, but my husband and I own the motorcycle shop down here at the corner. We are not necessarily proponents of such a large development. Granted, just like any other business owners, we welcome new business. We've been very blessed at our location. Fortunately, we're going to be looking for a new location, because our location is being developed into townhomes or apartments, is what we've been made to understand. So, it seems like there's a pattern continuing in the downtown area, and it's pushing out small businesses like ourselves. And as you all know, the market in Newnan is sort of crazy right now, and it's almost becoming unaffordable for small businesses to stay here. And so, that's just something to keep in mind when you're looking at these types of developments, and also including businesses within those developments, that it's also not just affordable for the residents, but it's affordable for the business owners to stay in business here, too. We are at a point where we may have to go out into Grantville or Moreland or Carrollton, because the market around here has just gotten so insane with the pricing. And so, and the other thing is, just as somebody who's lived here and grown up here, I love downtown. And I think something like an amphitheater or a Ponce City Market is a much more appropriate use of this land than 350 apartments. No offense, I think what you're trying to do is great, but I've been to Marietta, and I've seen those, those developments in downtown Marietta, and it is very unsightly, and the traffic is a nightmare. It's, it's just not fun. So, as somebody who works here, as somebody who's lived here, who's raised my children here, I really do feel very strongly that this is not a good option for our downtown area. I think the amphitheater is a great idea, because I drive to Peachtree City or Sonoya to go to their amphitheaters and, and see concerts. So, I think something along those lines would be really wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles. And thank you all, again, for your participation, your, your comments tonight. I'll turn it back over to the mayor. There is a small opportunity for the applicant, if he so chooses.
I would.
Yes, Gary?
Gary, give us some direction for the next time you come here, for the next week. What do you expect to hear from us, since we didn't get it till walking time? We, and, and that's, that's on us. I own that. And so, we will make sure we do that before you leave here tonight. And also, our website is going to be a source for you to go to, to understand what's going on here. I challenge Mr. Phillips to get something on there so that we understand, everybody understands what the process is and where we are. So, it'll be a direct link to the, to the Caldwell, it'll say Caldwell rezoning on there. So, you'll be able to go directly to it. We'll get on that in the morning and get that up as quickly as we can. So, Ms. Griffiths?
Hello. I'm Melissa Griffiths. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We just want to thank everybody so much for coming out tonight. I've been writing furiously while we've been here to take notes. We welcome this opportunity from the mayor and council. Appreciate you all coming. And our plan is to, to look at all of this, review all of it, and hopefully, we will be able to respond at the next meeting that's set for Tuesday, August the 6th, because we kind of thought that tonight would be, we would hear comments from you all, get some suggestions, and then we would look at the drawing board and see what, how we could respond and what we may be able to do. So, we appreciate you coming, and we look forward to being able to respond, mayor and council members, at that next meeting, if that is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so that is the opportunity. Mr. Krueger, you have blank cards, or?
Yes, Mayor Brady. I just want to remind the audience, if you didn't have a chance to speak, please recall that we handed these out. There's a basket in the back. We'll collect them at the time. You're welcome to stay after. There are pens. You can have some, leave notes. So, thank you, sir.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can't.
Excuse?
Please, we're still in session. Okay, so, does someone have a question? You can raise your hand. I'll be happy to answer it. Okay, so, Mr. Phillips, the understanding is, even though you, even though you might think as a collective group that you didn't give us a lot of input tonight, I have been taking a lot of notes. I know Ms. Donovan has. I see these green sheets going around. There were a lot of good, positive suggestions, and I know the applicant is listening on what can happen to that, to that property that is different than what has been proposed. So, I, I would encourage you to, to attend our next meeting, where, Mr. Phillips, I believe the format initially will be to report on the, the positive differences. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, the format that we are, are planning for the August 6th meeting is, we will, we will open it up with another presentation by staff, but this time, it will be simply presenting reconciliation of these comments of what we heard from you tonight. Then after that particular presentation, just like we afforded the citizens the opportunity tonight, you know, an hour approximately, we will afford an opportunity for the applicant to submit their proposal, modified proposal, without the 15-minute time limit, try to give them adequate similar time to what you had tonight, again, preserving due process. Then after that, there will be an opportunity for your comment related to his proposal. What we plan to do is then go to the August the 15th meeting. We haven't decided exactly what that format, format will be, but again, attempting to try to preserve due process, we're going to try to give everyone equal opportunity on the August, the 15th meeting. So, that, that is our, our approach, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Chapman, do you have a question?
Two questions. So, will there, will there be time limits for public comment next week?
Again, we have not decided exactly if we'll have time limits on the, we're not really interested in time limits and restricting you, but...
I'm not a fan of time limits. We only do...
We just need to know, so we can prepare, you know.
Right. I would say no.
Okay.
But at the same time, I would say to everyone, what we've heard in the past, we're, some of us, well, all of us, are fairly smart. We, we don't need to hear that again. I mean, we've heard it more than once now. So, if, if there's a new objection, we'd love to hear a new objection. We certainly want to hear your comments after you hear his...
Yes, response to their proposal, correct?
Revision.
Okay. And also, so that we don't make this mistake again of having a low participation on items that are so important to our community, like the LCI study, we owned this property in 2016. I haven't run into anyone who was aware of that, not a single person. And as you can see, I have met quite a few people.
Right.
I don't want that to happen again. I, I am very good at rallying people. I have three girls, and it's like herding cats, so that's sounding off.
We're going to count on you in 2021 to be part of that process, because we would love to see a packed house when it comes to comments. We have public hearings on issues, and there's no one here. Last month, Mr. Cole, the short-term work program that Mr. Phillips spoke of earlier, that was the public hearing when I said, "Congratulations on your record attendance." When we have those, no one shows up.
Well, I'm just got to say, after reading all of your documentation, your comprehensive plan, your LCI study, his application, I can see why, because it's very boring stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Now, we, we, we understand the nature of the beast. I mean, and we, we get that. But we, we, we love citizen participation, and that's the reason why we have done this very unique thing with this very unique application, with this very unique property that will be multi-generational in its impact.
Right.
And that's the reason we have done this. And, and we are trying to be as transparent and as open and as willing to listen as we can possibly be. So, Mr. Phillips, if there's, we have two other questions? When will Mr. Shelby back? In time for the vote? Yes. I'm not sure of Mr. Shelby's travel plans. All I know is that he was, this was a trip that was planned months ago. I mean, way before the applicant had him.
Well before, correct?
And, and he went on, I mean, so I can't.
I, I do believe Mr. Shelby's scheduled to be at our next meeting, August 6th.
Right.
Yeah.
There's another question in the back.
What is the, the due process? What is the due process? Because you've already added another meeting. Since the last meeting, last week, there were only three more meetings, and now then there's a four.
Correct. Well, the, the due process, the requirements were, conduct, advertise and conduct a public hearing, which was our initial public hearing we had last Tuesday. And per our procedure set forth, we are to give the, the applicant the pro, the for, and the against 15 minutes each, consider the Planning Commission report and the recommendation. That is due process. All right. And at that time, and since I've been here 19 years, we may have continued one or two, maybe. We typically vote at that particular meeting. But because of the significance of this project, what we did is, we did not close that public hearing. We left it open. Tonight is a continuation. August the 6th will be a continuation. August the 15th will be a continuation. So, in order to offer due process, I got to be fair to both sides with equal opportunity to speak. That, that is the due process. Thank you.
I can, I can guarantee you.
So, again, when I set the agendas of the process, then I'm just trying to afford equal opportunity to, to ensure the due process. So, thank you. Good question.
All right. Is, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, a second, to adjourn?
Until the next meeting.
Yes. Until the next meeting? This, this public hearing is still open. We're adjourning the public hearing until the next publicized meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Thank you for being here.